Good morning, I'd like to welcome everyone this year today. I called a meeting to order. I've been apprised that we might have a couple of commissioners that might be a little late, but let's have our roll call please. Thank you. Gene, will you pray?
Your sins.
No, no.
Invocation.
Invocation, Gene.
Pray.
Will you do the invocation, Mr. James?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dr. Johnson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
All right.
Well, dear Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together and to carry on the business of Pitt County. We ask our richest blessing upon each and every one, Father. We ask thee, Father, to be with us if we make decisions. Give us that wisdom and knowledge to do that as right by the citizens that we represent. Father, we ask thee to forgive us of our sins. We ask this in our holy name. Amen.
Let's face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, is there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's the vote. Thank you. Mr. Elliot.
Yes, sir. The first item under Presentations is a resolution to recognize Cindy Sibitt who is retiring from the Pitt County Public Health Department. I believe she has 37 years of service to our organization or in the system.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I need we accept the resolution.
Let's run on that, please.
We need to finish the last one first, I'm sorry.
You need to know.
And your approval of the agenda. Mr. James could confirm. Okay. Now you're ready.
Now you read start.
Yes.
All right.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have a formal framed resolution to present to her if we can go down front to do that. Do you want me to read this?
Please.
We have a beautifully framed resolution to present this morning, and it's entitled, "Resolution Honoring Cindy G. Sibitt For Her Years Of Service To Pitt County Government." Whereas Cindy Sibitt began her career at Pitt County Government on October 31st, 1977, whereas Cindy Sibitt has served as citizen of Pitt County faithfully during her 37 years of service, and retired also as a personnel technician too on January 31st, 2014. Whereas during her career with Pitt County Health Department, Cindy Sibitt provided excellent guidance on personnel issues and skillfully demonstrated innate ability to select qualified applicants for public health positions. And whereas Miss Sibitt helped match students and volunteers with agency preceptors and ensured adequate orientation was provided to these individuals. Whereas Miss Sibitt assisted with placement of employees and volunteers at shelters during response and recovery events such as tornadoes, Hurricane Floyd, and other natural disasters. Whereas Miss Sibitt served with the public with integrity, fairness, patience, compassion, sincerity. Whereas Miss Sibitt has made a significant difference in the lives of the people of Pitt County in many ways, including investigation of and response to communicable disease outbreaks. And whereas Miss Sibitt demonstrated innovative and efficient organizational skills which resulted in seamless registration processes for mass vaccination clinics such as the H1N1 flu epidemic and other disease outbreaks. Whereas Miss Sibitt was committed to the safety and welfare of children, adults, and families in our community. Whereas Miss Sibitt has served as a longtime member of the agency's Making Pit Babies Fit Maternity Fair designed to improve birth outcomes of Pitt County babies. Whereas Miss Sibitt served as an invaluable member of the agency's accreditation team in 2006 and reaccreditation team in 2011, ensuring that quality services were available in the Pitt County Health Department upheld its mission to protect, promote, and assure the health of all people in Pitt County, North Carolina. Now therefore be resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Cindy G. Sibitt for her commitment to the Pitt County Health Department, Pitt County Government, and for her outstanding and admirable service to the citizens of Pitt County. This is adopted this third day of February 2014. Signed by Chairman Mark W. Owens, Jr., and attested by Clerk Kimberly Heinz. Mr. Owens?
Cynthia.
Thank you.
You know, you can read these words, and the manager just read them, and each one has a significant play on what your last 37 years have been like. But beyond that, for you, the contributions that you've made to the people that you've touched is even more real, and we're truly thankful. Thank you. Thank you. Public address to the boards, I believe, is next. Mr. Elliot, have you got a list?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three people signed up. Bobby Hardison will come forward, please, and give your... Can you just repeat your name and address?
I'm Bobby Hardison, 2317 Mayfield Drive, Winterville, 28590. Good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
Would you like me to go ahead and state my reasons for here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There is a statute that says that the commissioners and the county can loan money for a subdivision to get their roads up to DOT specs. We've gone through all those formalities and stuff, and we have to have a 75% approval among ourselves in the subdivision, which means 75% of the road frontage must be petitioned positively to you before you can loan us the money. Well, you've done, gone through part of that process. We have gone through part of our process. But how many of you have had to borrow some money in your lifetime to buy something? Anybody?
Everybody, probably.
Everybody? Okay, well, see, you know, I grew up when you could walk up to somebody and if he knew you well, some of your friends and neighbors, "How about loan me $100?" Shake his hand, give you $100, you pay him back. Things were all that kind of order. Well, I got a few people in the subdivision that have had some things happen lately, like one had her husband passed away this last year. Got another one, his wife left him recently. And things are tight. And with no interest rate figure and no exact time payment for us to pay back our loan of the money to fix the road, we aren't quite able to get 75%. I'm getting close. We have 13 out of the 20 who have signed petitions and are formally, you know, approved as far as all the requirements. I have eight who haven't. And of those eight, one of them is a rental, which I can't even get it with the owner. But I believe that if we can get an interest rate on that money and maybe a little longer time than what we were guessing, we were guessing three or five years, and I think the state statute says you could give us up to eight if you're willing to, to pay back the money, then I believe we can make it a go and get our street DOT approved. The last bid that I had was $92,000, almost $93,000, and I turned that in with the application, you know, to the county commissioners. And, of course, gas prices, I'm sure dictate asphalt prices pretty much. But figures are kind of close to what they were when that bid was taken, so I don't know if going to be a lot of increase, you know, when the bid's led or not. But I feel like if we can get you as commissioners to determine us an interest rate on what we'd have to pay on repaying you back, and a time span, and we would request that you make it, if you could, six or seven years at least, if not eight. And that would make it a lot easier. I have, let's see, one, two, three widows that live right door to door in our subdivision. And, of course, one has a daughter living with her. And we've got several circumstances that the people really, if they can see specific figure, they'll feel comfortable, I think, in signing. But 13 is all I can get without having some specifics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardison. You have worked diligently at this for yourself and for your community, and we thank you for that. And we will take these requests that you made under advisement, and I... The manager will be back in touch with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Elliot.
Next, we have William Proctor.
Mr. Proctor.
William Proctor, Falcon Five Department, 4624 NC 22 Fountain. Excuse me. I'm just here today to thank you for what y'all have done and started doing. I think there was a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of hard feelings towards y'all and a lot of us in the fire department that I thought you didn't get the message that what was really going on. And I'd just like to really say thank you for took hope and doing what's needed. And when we ask, get the questions asked now about the fire service and if we're going to respond, we're telling them we're working on it hard and y'all are working on it very diligently. And I would like to say thank you and appreciate everything you're doing right now.
Thank you, William. Virgil, leave you next.
Virgil Lundell, Chief of Defense, Fire Department. Just want to echo what William said about appreciate y'all's help. We did meet with the county staff on the 23rd, I believe, and Mr. Elliot come up with some idea about getting the third person to come in and look at this, see what's going on. I think it was a great idea, and we're looking forward to moving ahead with this project and getting it behind us.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Mr. Elliot?
So we have signed up, unless there's anybody in the audience?
All right, I believe you're next, Mr. Manager.
Okay. Under Item's Report, Manager's Report, the next meeting dates will be February 17th at 6:00 PM, and then the meeting in March will be March 10th at 9:00 AM. Item B regards a multi-county brownfields cleanup coalition request that Pitt County's being asked to join Wilson County and Green County to submit an application for grant funding to allow, like EPA brownfield cleanup sites and for us to identify them and be able to participate. Right now, this is in an application process in terms of the three counties coming together. They're wanting us to sign an MOA, a memorandum of agreement, to say that we will participate. Before anything formally is applied for, we bring that back to you for approval. And right at this point in time, in Pitt County, we have not identified any specific sites that would, that this funding would apply to, but this is just the first step in trying to set this in motion. And we'd make sure that we're not committing the county to any match dollars without your approval and knowledge, and also any sites without your approval and knowledge. And my understanding is this, these funds could be used anywhere in Pitt County as well as in Green and Wilson. The county of Wilson will take, the county and city of Wilson will take the lead on this in terms of an agency that would receive the funds and report back as such. So if the board's okay with that, the initial MOA they've asked me to sign, one of the counties has already signed that, I will sign that and then report back to you if there's any additional information that's needed. On Item C, our 2012 CDBG funding, we were scheduled to receive $225,000. We were having some administrative errors in getting that all into place, but I'm now happy to report that that funding is secured. Even though it says 2012, it's kind, things kind of work backwards with the state on terms of CDBG funding. We do have the replacement housing units identified through the application process and are ready to move forward on that project. Item D regards the Fitch Ratings, which I'm sure you saw in the newspaper or are well aware, but just want to bring it out for the purpose of our minutes and just the public record. Fitch was one of the three bond rating agencies in New York City that have continued to rate us double A strength, which is about the highest that we're going to get based upon our size of a county, based upon our budget and our resources. Triple A would be the highest, but however, unless you're a Charlotte, a Wake, Mecklenburg, a large entity, you're only going to receive the triple A. The outlook that we had been given by Fitch has been upgraded to a stable outlook, which is a positive. So we're back into a full positive perspective with all three bond rating agencies. This will be good, especially as we go to them to borrow funds for Pitt Community College's $19.9 million general obligation borrowing in the future. We're glad to have that back into place. Item E, if Earl Merritt will step to the podium, please. Wanted to introduce Mr. Merritt. He is the, will be the interim director of the Pitt County Department of Social Services. Mr. Merritt just recently retired from Johnston County as their DSS Director. And Earl, how long were you in Johnston? I forget.
I was Johnston County DSS 25 years. I was in mental health for 16 years, for 41 years.
Right. Mr. Merritt comes from a county that has great experience with the NC FAST implementation. They were one of the top four counties, I think, that were used for implementation and have been... Go ahead.
Right. We were the initial pilot with the nutrition service, and we were also with Medicaid now too, and started to hard launch there.
And Mr. Merritt sits on the North Carolina Executive Committee for the NC FAST. As we're, in the interim period, he'll be here while the DSS Board is advertising, recruiting for a permanent full-time director. We're hoping to, anticipating to get things more back up to full speed and to come into compliance with our caseloads with the NC FAST implementation, staff training, the whole mix of needs. We do thank the staff for their hard work that they've done to date, but realize that we've got a ways to go to come into compliance. Like a lot of North Carolina counties, there's, we're not the only county that's dealing with implementation of NC FAST. All 100 counties of North Carolina are facing the difficulties and challenges of its own implementation. But just wanted the board to have a, see a name with a face, although you've heard from me in terms of what the, reporting back what the DSS Board is doing, but wanted to welcome Mr. Merritt and introduce him to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, for your assistance.
Thank you.
You have anything you want to say?
Well, I left here in May of 1972, and I graduated from East Carolina, and I went to Johnston County on September 1st, and I've been there ever since, so happy to be back.
Glad you're back.
Thank you, sir.
Item F on the agenda, a letter of recognition from Martha Merritt. This was a letter that was recognizing her for 100th birthday, according to your policy to recognize people, places, and events. The chairman is authorized to sign these, but then we report back to you the fact that this type of letter went out. So that was sent out, and we'd just like to recognize Ms. Merritt on her 100th birthday and congratulate her.
Yes. Well, Ms. Manager and Mr. Chairman, I want to say that Mrs. Merritt was very instrumental in my life. She was, she's in the community of which I was raised, and was very helpful, and I was very fortunate to have her hands on me and raising me. So to celebrate a 100-year marking of this young lady, I think is very appropriate. So I'm just happy to be part of this.
Thank you, Melvin.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Duane's next. I thought he'd already be over there.
Good morning.
Good morning, Duane.
Fellow commissioners, before you this morning, we have our monthly financial report for our general fund at December 31st, 2013. This report does represent half of the fiscal year or 50% of our financial operating year. You'll notice that our revenues have been collected at a rate of 57.10% through 50% of the year, and we've spent right at 48% of our budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year. I will just point out that this year's activity does compare favorably to last year's activity through December. And if you know, remember that we were able to finish in a very positive manner last year. We do anticipate, based on our year-to-date activity, being able to finish in a similar fashion for this current fiscal year. I'll take any questions.
Motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Duane. All right. Ms. Booker? Do we have a motion, does she has to approve that?
I so believe, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Unless you've got something in particular you want to say?
Well, you've also got an order check of advertisement that needs to be...
That was in the motion for both of those, I suppose.
That's the later on the agenda, isn't it?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I need Dr. Johnson and Ms. Ward to...
Ready now?
Yes.
All right.
Yours can count favorably.
Thank you, Nora.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Coming for you this morning asking that you approve a release of an RFP for the remounts of two ambulances. This is in keeping with our fiscal year budget and also the fleet management plan that we have. This will come back, be presented back to the Oversight Committee in March if you approve this RFP, and hopefully we'll be back in sometime March 1st of April with a bid.
Do you have a motion for that?
I need to finish the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
Ma'am?
This is still on the consent agenda.
All right, ready for the new motion?
Dr. Johnson would vote on the consent agenda.
All right. Motion been made in second. Ready to vote?
You're not.
Who are you waiting for?
Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Now you're ready.
Now we're voting on it.
Now we're voting.
And we've got your nod.
All right, Beth, let's go.
Dr. Johnson.
Let's see.
For the record, can you confirm who made that motion?
I made a motion. List Gas and Second. All right, Sheriff, you're yet?
Melissa Larson's here.
Oh, that's you. Excuse me. Hello.
We're here requesting approval to apply for our second year of funding for our Governor's Highway Safety Program. As you recall, we came before you last year and asked for approval for the first year of funding. We have finally received the final approval for the first year of funding, so we're technically just going to get started on that. And we need to go ahead and submit our application to get the year-two funding. This is the project that will allow our lab to conduct the blood analysis for impaired driving cases.
Melissa, there's actually two items on here. We lumped them together, the year-one funding and the year-two request for... So can you summarize the year-one then?
Yes, so the year-one is the grant which allows for the chemist and the lab, and it also allows for the equipment. So that is our year-one funding that we need to go ahead and get your approval for, and then for us to apply for the second year of funding, which will just be for the chemists.
And that's the year-two portion of the project?
Correct.
All right. Tom, Mr. James, and Mr. Gas.
Well, this funding, support the, with the results that come out of this, will they be admissible to court and stand up in court, or will we still have to apply to Raleigh? There's a lot of impaired driving things that I understand are going back years, you know, waiting for results from Raleigh. Will this, will shorten that?
Yes, that's the gap that we're looking to fill. Instead of sending those samples to Raleigh, we'll be doing them here locally, and that definitely will hopefully shore up that delay.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, Tom. Mr. James?
Yes. Melissa, why don't our fees pay for this instead of the citizens of Pitt County having to pay for it?
Yeah, that's a great question, and what we're hoping to do with this is actually assess the fee to the defendant. So the defendant will actually be paying the chemist and all the analysis that goes with it, and that's just a process we're going to have to work through to work with our judicial system and make sure that that fee is assessed to the defendant.
Mr. Manager, I'm going to request that you be in contact with the judges or whoever the powers to be to make sure that they understand that we would like for them to pay for their own mistakes, not the taxpayers of Pitt County.
State law allows for that, so that's something that we'll be working on.
It's currently done now. When the case is referred to the state for testing, those charges are added to the individual's court costs, and we're looking at doing the same thing that, since we're not, the testing is not being done in Raleigh, but will be done here in Greenville, that we, whatever our actual costs are, we recoup those just as if we sent them to the state.
Correct.
Then why are we having to appropriate $10,000 and some dollars then for that?
That's the year-two match of the cost of $69,500. In the year-two of this program, there's a 15% match required, so in order to bring this program in-house, year-two does require a match.
That's correct. It's our local match for us to be able to...
But in the end, we're going to get that money back. Is that correct?
Well, in the end, once the grant funds are exhausted, we want to be self-sustaining, and that self-sustainment is going to come through those defendant fees.
I think not only do we want to be self-sustained, but we need to get the money back that we have appropriated to go into that for this expense. Do you follow what I'm talking about?
How many cases do you anticipate on testing here in Pitt? Either through bringing the backlog to Pitt County, or if we were all up to date now going forward, how many cases would you anticipate processing?
Would I talk to the state about that? Our best guess was there is a couple hundred a year just coming from Pitt County. And there's obviously the backlog, but the incoming cases would be a couple hundred cases a year. And what we do want to do, if the county will allow it, is to expand the program over time, because there's other surrounding counties that are having the same issue, and they're not going to have the ability like we are perhaps to bring this in-house. So that, I think that'll help in the long term, recoup some money too. But we do have to present a local match, you know, just for any other grant.
Yeah. Melissa, also, do we test for other counties, or is this just for Pitt County?
We're going to start out just for Pitt County, because we want to make sure that we do it, and we do it right, and then long-term goal is to expand it out.
And then that's a way we might can get some new revenue.
Yes, and it'll also help those other counties that have a high backlog of cases. I mean, you know those drivers are coming into Pitt County.
That's right. Okay.
Gene, as a way of illustration, previously under the state, Senator Rollins having analyzed, a figure comes to my mind, $600 for the cost of analyzing those drugs or what, blood or whatever it is went up. Now, what that would be the figure in this, that will have to be determined, but that's the approach that you were pushing for.
Okay. That is what the state allows us to charge, is $600 to the defendant.
Good. We need to stay involved in that, I believe.
Based upon this being a sephs, the sameing program, I make a motion that we approve both year-one and year-two.
Second. All right. Beth, you want to?
My question was the number of backlog cases. We don't have an exact figure of like how many are sitting there now.
I'd be hesitant to say.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Had a motion made in second, ready to vote. That's for both of those items, right? The motion was made for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've already taken care of number four.
No, sir. Not formally.
Okay. Ms. Booker? Sheriff, you can stay with us.
Um, per statutes, we are required to request approval from the commissioners for the order of advertisement during the week of March 19th, 2014, of unpaid 2013 Pitt County taxes that are leans on real property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, ready to vote?
Before Kathy leaves, Scott, have you talked to Kathy about the issue that I brought up?
Yes, I did. We're researching that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number five?
Oh, we're on the reappointments?
Yes.
Okay, you've got to get me on target. We're moving so fast, I can't keep up.
We'll slow up in a minute.
No. The, we have reappointments for our Vidaant Health Medical Center Board, and I think all of us have had this information for a while, and I would like to recommend the reappointment of Dr. William Jones, Noel Balcom, and Dr. Walter Profol.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Catch you, Beth.
Can I vote yes?
All right, Mr. Webb, you want to tell us about number six?
Yeah, let me get my voting thing to work. This will be an appointment for the Pitt Community College Representative.
This will be an appointment for the Pitt Community College representative. And I want to get his name right. Bryant Waters is who nominated.
Any other nominations? If not, let's vote. All right, the Noel, number seven, the local fire relief fund board.
Yes, sir, these are recommendations that actually comes from the fire department itself.
As listed on, in the agenda, is there a motion to approve that?
And if you finish your last one as well.
Tom, catch up with us on the last one and vote yes. Thank you. All right, now do we have a motion for the item before us?
So moved.
All right, any further question? Not, let's vote.
I think that next one's the same thing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have a motion on number eight?
So moved.
Second. All right, is the voters up with us? Dave, catch Dave up, Gene.
Okay. Now you're ready.
All right, now you're ready to vote? All right, Scott, I believe we're now down to you, aren't we?
Yes, we have an appointment and reappointment to the Grift and Planning and Zoning Board. This item is on page one fourteen. And they are requesting your consideration of Ray Hardy's reappointment. And they're also recommending the appointment of Dew Birch to replace Pat Whaley on the board.
I say move.
Exactly.
All right, let's vote. All right, Scott, number ten.
And number ten is.
Are either Mr. Coulson, one eighteen?
Okay, let me catch up.
Animal Control Advisory Board just had a resignation of Williams, I'm sorry.
Yeah, James Woodley.
James Woodley, J.C. Woodley.
Yeah, we recommend that William Sergeerson be appointed to the Animal Control Advisory Board.
Second. Made in second, let's vote. All right, commissioners' comments, starting with Mr. Garris.
Good meeting, Mr. Chairman. You don't need to stretch it out so long the next time, Doug.
I think we've got something else coming, Jimmy.
No comments.
Dr. Johnson, Mr. Webb, Ms. Ward?
I can usually keep up with you, but it's been hard today.
Mr. Coulson?
No comments. No comment.
James, Dave?
No.
All right, Mr. Elliott, I guess we go into your other meeting now? Or you want to close this and come back? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, if you adjourn this meeting and then we can open the workshop on this capital improvement plan.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Read the vote? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, you have the choice of either to stay in this room to hold the workshop or we can go down to EOC and do it in a workshop format. And also you have the choice of whether you want to televise it or have it non-televised.
I'm fine right here. Is the board fine right here? As to televise it, what's your pleasure, the board?
I think it should be.
I think it should be.
All right, let's decide. What, Madam Clerk, do you have something to say? What was it, Kim?
I was making sure Mr. Webb was good. We're good. Just flicker.
You got it. Okay, we want to thank those of you that were here for the first part of this meeting. And you probably thought I was kind of moving along a little fast. But we've got, due to the weather, we had to postpone a budget schedule meeting. And so we want to bring that on at the conclusion of the meeting that we have here before us. And it's your game, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, if we can take a five-minute recess or break while we bring the materials up for this workshop, then we can begin.
Slow down, Beth.